All right, it is 6:00 PM. Welcome, everybody. Let's go ahead and stand if you are able to.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Peter, Foster, Hartway, there, Hennigan?
Here.
Imay?
Here.
Patrice?
Here.
Yusuf Avrul.
Here.
All right. As always, we like to start with the best part of our meeting, which is honoring our 207's Best this month. And it's November, and it's so hard to believe we are in November. We are honoring the Best for Fine Arts. So I will go ahead and pass it to Dr. McManus to start with Main West.
I would like to introduce Ray Copeland. Ray, could you come on up here and stand in front of that? Perfect, thank you. So Ray's real expertise lies in telling story with light. But I have to point out that she has a pretty terrific knack for telling stories herself with words. She told me the story of her first day at Main West. And when she walked into the brand-new C-Wing Visual Arts Suite, she stepped into this big, bright, wide-open space. And I suppose it was in contrast with her middle-school experience in comparatively cramped quarters. And she did a lot of art at home during the pandemic, too. And she said, "Oh, my goodness, this is fancy schmancy." So Ray describes theater as her way back to people. She talked about having become out of practice socially, having long stretches of isolation during middle school, and being physically around other people was a change. She dove into film and broadcasting visual arts classes, and eventually tech theater, which she joined her sophomore year. There, she found her medium and her people. She is especially proficient in lighting design, where she sees her role as silently telling the story. The lights shape what the audience sees, Ray pointed out. The actors are how the story gets told, but the lights are distinctively part of the theater experience. You don't need to be in a theater to see people act, but once you are in the Main West Theater, you are in Ray's world. She will make the story come to life, literally shining a light on the most important things and leaving the audience in the dark when it is the appropriate time to wonder and reflect. Telling and sharing stories is the heart of theater, Ray told me, and that is what art is about. And she certainly explored other areas of the art world, not only at Main West, but throughout her life. Running the cameras in the film program and producing on WMTH, drawing, painting, sketching, crocheting, writing with friends, helping her mom put on middle-school performances in the drama program, which she tagged along as a little kid, building gigantic sculptures out of cardboard, painting and building things with her grandparents. In her bedroom, filled with handmade display cases for her My Little Pony figurines and other pieces of furniture built by her grandfather, this future tech theater major dreamed up imaginative stories and honed her ability to create. Her creativity, plus her love for hands-on work, leads from these early days into her passion for storytelling with light, which will now become her future. Ray's teachers lauded her passion, her wit, and her storytelling ability. Mr. Tivano raved about Ray. "I had Ray last year in English III, and wow, what a writer. Whatever the assignment was, she excelled in content, intelligence, and sophistication. But on top of that, she would make these contributions to our in-class discussions, making her an invaluable component of the class dynamic, a genuine superstar." Mr. Harmon highlighted Ray's distinction by the Illinois High School Theater Festival Selection Committee. As a lighting designer, Ray has a gift for understanding how aesthetics impact a story and the overall experience for an audience. They are incredibly attentive to detail and always strive to do their very best. As evidence, Ray has been selected to work on this year's Audio-Visual Effects Crew for the Illinois High School Theater Festival's All-State Production of Newsies. We are honored that Ray will be representing Main West and so proud of their noteworthy achievement. Ms. Stuthite appreciates Ray's humor, which I also enjoy. Ray is a student who easily sees mathematical connections that often help propel our lessons forward. This helped other students look for those same connections. I also really appreciated Ray's quick wit and sense of humor. Ray's use of puns added laughter to many classroom discussions. Mr. Schneider noted that Ray just couldn't help but write stories, even in computer programming. Ray's creative, problem-solving approach to computer programming made our class a more enjoyable place to learn. Ray's charismatic personality and enthusiasm were contagious, helping to energize the class. Ray didn't just learn to code, but she also learned how to write infectious stories that complemented the program. Mr. Walzer said he is honored to share his joy in teaching Ray. When I think about Ray's journey at West, the following words come to mind: driven, curious, and creative. These are qualities that sustain our community, and I was already able to see them on full display in Spanish II two years ago. Since then, Ray has only continued to leave a positive, lasting impact on our school. It has been one of the greatest joys of my teaching career to watch this impact unfold. I'm so proud of you, Ray. Mr. Strom described qualities that bode well for Ray's future in technical theater. Ray has been an outstanding student in visual effects, consistently demonstrating creativity, curiosity, and dedication. They approach every project with enthusiasm and a deep sense of pride in the final product. Ray commits fully to each phase of the creative process, from concept development to execution. What sets Ray apart is their ability to think visually and conceptually at the same time. Their ideas are inventive and often spark broader discussions that elevate the entire class's creative thinking. Simply being around Ray encourages others to participate in the artistic process, as their energy and open collaborative approach naturally invite feedback and share problem solving. Ray's positivity, strong work ethic, and imaginative spirit make them not only an exceptional artist, but also an inspiring presence in the classroom. Their contributions reflect both technical skill and genuine passion for visual storytelling, making them truly deserving of special recognition from the district. And finally, tech director Mr. McManus spoke to Ray's central role in all of our productions at Main West. Over the past several years, I've had the pleasure to work with Rachel Copeland, an outstanding student at Main West High School. Rachel has a passion for theater, and since joining Main West Theater Program, may have developed into an outstanding leader and contributor. From the beginning of their high-school career, Ray has continually taken on more responsibilities and avidly expanded their knowledge. Rachel has been involved in Main West Fine Arts since their sophomore year, when they worked on Technical Theater Crew and the Fall Play Anne Frank, where they began working on lights and light design. Since that time, they have been incredibly active working on almost every theatrical production at Main West. So for all that Ray has contributed to Main West, there is one drawback to her essential involvement in our stage program. We are going to have to keep an eye on her during senior week, because she has already stated her intention of walking off with a very valuable piece of production equipment. "You gave me access to a fog machine," Ray told me. "You can't have it back."
It's mine.
For all that you've done for us, we do have a small gift for you tonight, but it is not a fog machine. Thank you for all that you've given Main West over your four years. You truly are 207's Best. Ray, can you share who's here with you tonight?
My parents, and my mom and my dad. I know I look just like my mom. It's really a striking resemblance.
And can you tell us about your plans for next year?
College. I plan to go to University of Nebraska-Lincoln for entertainment design.
Well, you're well set up for it.
Thank you.
They should have the fog machine.
They should.
She wasn't impressed with the lighting.
Hold on, more. More to come, more to come.
All right, congratulations. Well, Rachel, with that, we move to Dr. Vala Khan.
Fantastic. Evangeline, can you come on up? When you meet Evangeline Foote, you immediately sense a quiet brilliance, a student whose creativity, curiosity, and reflection extend far beyond the walls of a classroom. As one of Main South's D207's Best Honorees for Fine Arts, Evangeline represents the intersection of imagination and intellect, a place where art, music, and literature beautifully converge. For four years, Evangeline has been a proud member of the Main South Band, performing with dedication and heart and memorably, most memorably, at the National Concert Band Festival in Indiana. Her love for the arts doesn't stop at music. She's an accomplished visual artist whose mixed media work captures depth, emotion, and meaning using materials most would overlook. She credits her teachers for helping her evolve as an artist and as a thinker. Her favorite piece, a conceptual artwork built from wire, film, and personal imagery, stands as a testament to her ability to push her creative limits and find beauty in complexity. When she isn't creating, Evangeline is reading. A passionate scholar of literature, she plans to study comparative literature and philosophy at the University of Chicago, inspired by her experiences in AP Literature and the UChicago Summer Seminars. She finds joy in works like Haruki Murakami's "The Wind-Up Bird Chronicle." She is drawn to stories that challenge the mind and reveal the art within confusion. Furthermore, Evangeline spoke of her parents with deep gratitude. She described her father as the one who pushes her to move forward and take on new challenges, and her mother as the one who inspires her love for complex thought and philosophical study. She said, "I don't think I'd be doing any of what I'm doing now without them." Dr. Terilyn Keith, who's in the audience? Hi, Terilyn. She is the Department, Fine Arts Department Chair, and she said, "Evangeline is an exceptionally talented, humble, and dedicated artist and musician. Her creativity, leadership, and passion have greatly enriched the Fine Arts Department. In the band program, she's been a model of musicianship and mentorship, inspiring peers with her warm spirit. In the visual arts, her AP Drawing, 2D Design, and 3D Design portfolios show outstanding technical skill and authentic creativity. Beyond her talents, she's admired for her kindness, humility, and leadership. Evangeline's positivity, grace, and commitment to excellence make her a beloved and respected member of every ensemble and classroom." Mr. Greg Regalotto, Fine Arts teacher, stated, "To put Evangeline's artistic ability into perspective, she is truly among the top 1% of the thousands of students I've taught over 34 years. She's a remarkably well-rounded artist, an extraordinary drawer, exceptional painter, and outstanding storyteller. Her talent shines through in every piece she creates." Evangeline took Art I as a freshman, then AP Drawing, AP 2D Design, and now AP 3D Design, a first for any student I've taught. Her creativity flows effortlessly as she transforms ideas into a universal visual language. Her passion for art, curiosity, and imagination make her truly exceptional." And finally, Ms. Sheila Miller, English teacher, said, "Evangeline was an exceptional student in AP Language and Composition. From the first week, I was impressed by her willingness to contribute to discussions and her easygoing nature. Throughout the year, she brought cheerful energy, sharp wit, and thoughtful insights to every class. She immediately recognizes an author's humor and takes time to reflect on deeper themes in what she reads. Evangeline also loves to write. Her books are filled with annotations. Her essays show stylistic maturity, and her creative pieces reveal a distinct, confident voice that reflects both curiosity and intellect. Evangeline embodies what it means to be a Main South Hawk: thoughtful, creative, and curious, always seeking the deeper meaning in every experience. Evangeline, we are all deeply proud and look forward to being witness to your impact in this world." Tell us who's in the audience tonight.
I have my parents and my little sister.
My parents and little sister. And what are your aspirations? What are your goals moving forward? I know I said some of it in here, but can you kind of repeat that?
So I'm going to be going to the University of Chicago, hopefully to double-major in comparative literature and philosophy, and we'll see how that goes. And I'm thinking of doing pre-, post-secondary ed, but we'll see what happens.
Awesome, congrats.
Congratulations, thank you so much.
All right, let us now go to Dr. Pykel.
Come on up, Jackson.
We don't forget, I just want to acknowledge the great showing by our Fine Arts Department. They are such awesome supporters of my students. All right, it is a great honor to recognize Jackson Horvath as Main East recipient of the 207's Best Award for Fine Arts. Jackson exemplifies creativity, dedication, and leadership in every artistic endeavor he undertakes. From the theater stage to the art studio to the broadcasting booth and the music pit, Jackson's talents and enthusiasm for the arts have made him a cornerstone of Main East's creative community. Art has always been a central part of Jackson's life. Growing up with a mother who's a graphic designer and a father who's an art teacher, he was surrounded by inspiration from a young age. Jackson began drawing early on and continues to refine his skills through AP Art, where he demonstrates strong technique, imagination, and storytelling via his visual work. He has earned multiple Scholastic Art Awards and is a member of the National Art Honor Society. Jackson's also a passionate performer whose love of acting, music, and storytelling has defined much of his high-school experience. A four-year member of the Thespian Troop 1792, Jackson has served as both Vice President and Treasurer, mentoring younger students and helping to organize club events. His stage credits include leading roles such as Captain Hook in Wendy and Peter Pan, Mr. Wormwood in Matilda, and Juror Number Eight in Twelve Angry Jurors, as well as performances in A Midsummer's Night Stream, Almost Maine, The Plague That Goes Wrong, and even more than that. Jackson approaches every character with depth, humor, and empathy, bringing both professionalism and joy to his work. In addition to his acting accomplishments, Jackson is a talented bassist, performing in both Jazz Band and the V Show Pit Band. He is also a founding member of his own band, Jasmine Voyage, which writes and performs original songs, one of which will serve as the theme music for this year's variety show. Jackson is equally committed to the Main East's community through his participation in the Gift of Lyceum Program, the Senior Leaders Program, and National Honor Society. As a senior leader, Jackson helps freshmen to adjust to high-school life, building connections and creating a welcoming environment through mentorship and encouragement. Jackson's teachers and counselors speak with a deep admiration about his character, artistry, and leadership. Linnea Grooms, theater director, shared that working with Jackson is truly a pleasure. He consistently demonstrates an exceptional level of dedication and motivation that sets him apart both as a student and a leader. Jackson approaches every opportunity with genuine enthusiasm and a strong sense of responsibility, always keeping the best interests of his peers and school community at heart. He has a keen eye for detail and eagerness to expand his knowledge, not only to excel personally, but also to elevate those around him. He's a wonderful theater artist. His talent as both an actor and a director reflects a deep understanding of craft and creativity. His passion for the arts, paired with strong work ethic and leadership qualities, ensures that he will continue to grow and thrive. There is no doubt that he has a very bright and impactful future ahead of him. Mr. Greg Ruse, variety show and lyceum director, shared that what has struck him most about Jackson over these last four years is his generosity. As a bass player, no matter the song or performer, he is always willing to roll up his sleeves, put in the work, and help students be their best. Since his freshman year, he's been the foundation of the combo for V Show and has stretched himself musically to learn new styles and play in whatever setting the performance calls for. In the last few years, he has been eager to help mentor new bass players and help them feel more comfortable and confident. As a member of lyceum, Jackson has been similarly generous in service. Whether planning a project to connect students and the Niles Public Library or giving his time and talents to the broader community, Jackson is always willing to jump in and help. On a service trip to Detroit, despite the heat and hard work, he approached every challenge with positivity and perseverance. Mr. Ruse shared that he's been so fortunate to work with Jackson these past four years and is excited to see what he does next. Susie Caliendo, counselor, shared that she has had the good fortune of working with Jackson and as his school counselor for the past three and a half years. In this time, she has been constantly impressed with his passion for trying new things, his love of taking on challenges, and his desire to create a positive environment for all. Jackson's a passionate artist and performer who has already made a lasting impact on the community. His daily presence will be greatly missed when he graduates, but Ms. Caliendo is very confident that you'll be a phenomenal addition to your college community. Phil Ash, broadcasting teacher, shared that having Jackson in class and directing him as the news anchor for the Blue Demon News has been a true pleasure. Jackson is always ready to learn, contribute, and help others in class. In front of the camera, he is a naturally gifted communicator. Whatever the message, Jackson delivers it with engaging energy that is 100% his own, something rare to see in most people, let alone high-school students. The diversity of his artistic portfolio between music, visual arts, drama, and media is truly inspiring. In every aspect of life, Jackson demonstrates what it means to lead with creativity, compassion, and purpose. His artistic achievements, leadership, and community spirit have left a lasting impression on Main East. Congratulations, Jackson.
All right, Jackson, who's here with you tonight?
My parents, and my sister, and my grandparents, and of course, Ms. Grooms, Ms. Jordan, and Mr. Beck.
Jackson, share with us what your plans are for after Main East.
I just finished applying to a bunch of schools for acting. So we'll see, I don't have a specific school, but a lot of good options out there.
Yes, congratulations, you deserve it.
And Jackson, by the way, is my next-door neighbor, and his family. Congratulations, Jackson.
Try something new today.
Ray, congratulations to all of our 207's Best this month. This is now your opportunity to take pictures with your loved ones, your crew, whoever you brought with you out in the hallway with your principal. You can, of course, come back and stay with us all day long, but I also understand that you have more to do. Have a great night, everyone.
About what's happening will not be the journey in our lives, but both girls are being recognized by the state today. So it's right after the circuit was just moved.
And the grounds mean South Lake, so we'll look at that. All right, so let's go ahead and move forward. Updates from our superintendent.
We have a couple of updates first. Wanted to, before we move into our thread agenda, just want to take a special moment to thank our Board of Education members who are here tonight. Really an opportunity to honor you during Board Member Appreciation Month. This is a designated time, and I feel like it should be every day, but it's a designated time across the state and the nation to recognize our dedicated volunteers that lead our public schools. Serving on the Board of Education is, in my opinion, the most critical and challenging volunteer role in our community. These positions really require immense trust from the public, filled by community members who have stepped forward to dedicate their time, energy, and passion to the well-being of our students and the health of our district and communities. The work of a board member, really, as we know, extends far beyond the meetings and will, if we see on stream, or in-person meetings, countless hours of preparations, reading hundreds of pages of reports, understanding complex budget constraints, understanding intricate school policies and budgeting. But it also involves community meetings and being present, being visible in our communities and our schools. You are tremendous supporters of what we do each and every day, and you help us also celebrate our students and our staff members that are here tonight. So given your leadership and your vision, they really provide the foundation for the great work that we all do, including our teachers, our staff, and our students. So on behalf of our administration, and our staff, and our community, we would like to thank you for all that you do. We have a token of appreciation for you today. We also have a little ID, because we hear that you need to perform. You need to be formal now, you have your own ID. But in the back, I think I've done that in our communication around the year, inviting you to be present in any and all activities that you're able to. And I know I see all of you at different times. So this is sort of the golden ticket to unite your ID, be able to show. So if there are any events, obviously IHSA events, we can't, right, because those are World Fine Arts SA. But anything that we are organizing in-house, please come. Show your ID, we'll work with athletic directors, fine arts, all of those areas, so that they know what this is. And please bring your family along. This is just an incentive for you to come and not have to necessarily plan ahead of time. Again, just a token of appreciation. But please, just really want to say thank you for your support, your trust in us, and your stewardship and integrity and unwavering commitment to our students. Thank you. The badges are there. So this is yours. I just wanted to use as an example. How you're officially going. There you go. You don't have to wear them. Mine are golden tickets. And thank you, Jimmy, for organizing and coordinating all this for us. All right, and next, our attendance plan. We had shared with you about three months ago before we kicked off our attendance efforts. And we wanted to be able to share with you today. Now we're closed in a quarter, right? So we're able to get the data for a full quarter to be able to share with you. A lot of celebrations, obviously a lot of work to do. We knew that this was not going to be a one-year effort, but I think the efforts of each and every building, even each and every person involved in the plan, I think has definitely paid off. And before we get started, Katie, Kynan is not here today, but you can remember Katie and Kynan have been working together on this plan and supporting it throughout. Just want to say thank you for all the work that you have done. I know this is a huge lift, but I think the results speak volumes of the work you put into it. Thank you. It's been a shared responsibility and a shared effort, and we couldn't do it without every layer of the organization. As we had talked about before, we promised that we would come back and share how things are going after first quarter. I will caveat, we say first quarter, but we did it through the end of October, since we just ended October. So it's a little past first quarter, but it did look at that whole beginning part. Just as a reminder, 95 attendance expectation was really something that we were hoping for our students and trying to get as many students to hit that 95% expectation. Really having that layered communication plan, having very clear expectations and responses to help support that, along with our incentives, Tier 1 and 2 supports, and then just monitoring the impact. Because it's great if we do these things, but what matters is, is it having an impact? And so I do want to just put the definition in again for what chronic absenteeism is. It's students who have 10% or more of school days that are missed, and that's whether it's excused or unexcused. So it looks at both. And the school report card had just come out, and so last year we were at 33% chronic absenteeism. And our hope is to kind of, well, is to reduce that and increase the 95%. So there's a lot to celebrate tonight. We definitely see some rising attendance, some reduced absences, and renewed engagement. This is our best quarter over the last five years. And actually, it's even beyond that. But we don't have data in all the areas beyond that. But it's very exciting to see that we are making movement in our attendance efforts. So want to share that. So what this shows you is a year-to-year comparison. On the left is 2024, and on the right is 2025. We just compared the last two years. In Friday notes, we will share with you a more longitudinal, but this was a much easier way to see the comparison. What you see in the green is the percentage of students that hit that 95% attendance expectation. That blue is kind of that on-watch. And then our red are those that are still within that chronic absenteeism. So in the months of August, September, and October, all areas, we have improved our students hitting that 95% target, and we have decreased our chronic absenteeism as a district. And so you can see, I mean, over like 6% decrease in October alone. And one thing to point out is that we do historically see attendance dip a little bit in October. So that is not unusual, so that trend is typical. But what we're looking at is the fact that we are continuing to see better performance than last year. So in addition to that, and that's looking at the district as a whole, we did want to look at some of our subgroups, as a whole, we did want to look at some of our subgroups, because they tend to be more overrepresented in having more absenteeism concerns. And in the areas of IEP, ML, and our free reduced, students who qualify for free reduced, in all of those areas, we've also seen gains. So, again, just by looking at those subgroups, it's very positive. Again, in all areas here, you will see an increase in students hitting that target of 95% and a reduction from last year in the percent of chronic absenteeism. Obviously, still a lot of work to be done, but we are seeing movement, and that's what we would like to see, starting... Going here to ML, same as before. We saw a little bit of a dip here in October with the percent of students hitting the target, 95%, but we still saw a decrease in the chronic absenteeism. So, we had a little bit more in that on-watch area, and so it's a group we're definitely watching to try to encourage and ensure that we continue to see that growth. But again, all other areas from last year to this year have shown improvement. And then the same is true with looking at our subgroup of students who qualify for free reduced status. And so, I just thought it was important to show that, again, in those vulnerable populations, we are seeing the improvements as well. So, it's just a huge success to see these growths. I do want to highlight a couple of things of just some amazing work that's happening in the buildings. Attendance celebration and incentives, a couple of things to highlight. At Maine East, their DJ of the week has been a huge hit and really motivating students. It's really fun when you're there, and there's been some really fun songs that they've chosen. And so, I think it was just a really good campaign to get students motivated, so I wanted to highlight that. In addition, we wanted to highlight some of the work at Maine West. They had handed out tickets, the yellow tickets for students who arrived on time in that first week of school, and then some reminders for those that came a little late. They've done things like ice cream, like Fraser Pops for students who came on time, and they have ways of earning rewards and things for students who have demonstrated the earning of five-star points for being on time and present at school. So, it just talks about like some of those positive things that really are the importance of being part of a school community and celebrating that. We also had our tier-one social privileges. And so, if you remember, one of the things we looked at was being eligible to go to football games. You needed to be 90% on time and present for the week in which there was a football game at Maine East and Maine West. And if you remember, at Maine South, we didn't do it this year, just because of the number and needing to on-ramp that, because they hadn't done five-star. And so, again, like at Maine West, 80% of students at above met the qualification. Maine East, 70% and above. And then at Maine South, parking has been a huge motivator. Over 68% of their senior class does have parking, and 98% of them have met through October. And so, only a few students, only 2%, well, 3%, have lost the privilege of parking. So, that's been a huge motivator for attendance. Also, for homecoming, the students that were eligible for homecoming at Maine East, 79% based on the expectations, 92% at South, and 85% at West. The other part to note here is that the buildings, depending on the building, they did work with students for, there were some ways that they could have attendance plans to work towards the attending homecoming, even if they haven't met the threshold. And those were individual plans, or if like a student, for example, may have been hospitalized, or there was something significant. Those are excused absences. Those are not counted in this. It's only for those that are unexcused. And that's also the 90% present and on time. So, a lot of our students, again, we're seeing the fact that so many met that 95% threshold. It's also impacting their ability to participate and attend activities. And then, lastly, we do have some supports that we had talked about that we put in place. First 30 is an intervention for those students that were struggling in last year's, like the last semester worth of school. So, it really targets sophomores, juniors, and seniors who had 60 to 75% attendance last year. And so, here you can see at Maine East, we had 40 students. West, we had 82, and South, we had 69 students participate, and a large number of students who improved their attendance during that time. So, you know, the group overall at East went from 70.87% to 83% during the intervention. West went from 69.53% to 84%. And then at South, 24 increased their rate by 90% and no longer were considered chronically true, or chronically chronic absenteeism. So, 36% of students met their goal of 95%, which was amazing. It just shows the impact that an intervention can have on supporting our students who are struggling. And then, we also did the check and connect. This was a tier-three level of support. This is just being implemented, because we allowed that tier-two level of support to go through, and then students who still need that, need additional support, they've been referred to our tier-three where we're implementing check and connect. This was trained across the district for all of our advocates through the SA ALOT program. And then at South, we are using some teaching assistance, since we don't currently have the ALOT program there. And here, you can see 42 students have been paired at Maine East, 51 at West, and 10 at South. And so, these students have started receiving the intervention and support to help them with attendance and building that connection, and again, communication with home and communication with teachers, just to continue to support the attendance piece. And so, some really great things to help respond to and support our students. And so, I thought it was just a really good way to, you know, share all of the amazing work that our, everything from our parents, our students, our teachers, our administration, and then the support of the Board of Education, and that we really can make, you know, a lot of growth. I was like, if we have 1%, I'll be happy. It'll be growth, and we're definitely exceeding that growth. So, it's exciting to see, and looking forward to the continuation. Are there any questions?
How, what about the sports stuff and like after-school stuff? Like, are the coaches really holding the people? That was my concern.
Yes, so, we do have, and I will share that in the Friday Note, because we had a, just to be transparent, there was a couple of issues with rostering in some areas, but overall, our, when the students were rostered, and again, I'm not on the field to know every single time. We have had a couple of people reach out when there was like a student that was participating, and then found out there was an extended meeting circumstance, and then ensuring that we code for that. So, we have heard some feedback if that's happened, but we do have like the number of athletes that have been impacted. And remember, it's the day of, so it could just be for them. It could be, I was out sick with an illness that day, and then they're not eligible. So, there's a number of reasons. But we do have all of those numbers. We just had to have some of it adjusted, and with it only being November 3rd, we had to wait until the end of the month. So, that will be included in Friday Notes.
But it's working, is what?
I mean, I think as best as we can assume from what we're hearing, yes. Anecdotally, we've also heard from the teachers that some of the makeup policy. We had just asked our teacher committee to say, like, how can we gather additional information about our makeup policy, too, to see like, how is that impacting the classroom? And anecdotally, we had a couple of teachers speak up and say, you know, that they've heard other teachers say, like, before they would have had like 10 kids or five kids miss a final, or not a final, a summative exam, and they're seeing that be two students instead. So, anecdotally, we're hearing it's improving and it's helping. It's just hard to know exactly, especially with athletics and fine arts, as to whether or not, you know, relies on the coach and the sponsor to implement it. But the fact that our attendance is improving tells me that these efforts are having impact.
Yeah, and I think it's great to see that, you know, the district's efforts are making a difference, because it not only benefits the student, but it like, I suppose, it benefits the teachers, too, because they're not playing catch-up. I did have a question, because you had mentioned that we see a rise in absences in October. Do we see that kind of consistently go up through the winter and cold and flu season, or is there a particular reason why we historically see that?
No, I mean, October is kind of like the honeymoon of the start of the school year, definitely. But yes, we do tend to see that continue to rise, that the gap continues to rise.
And so, then, you know, if we see October as sort of the end of the honeymoon, is it worth, you know, maybe re-upping those efforts, you know? You know, I don't know how that would look, but...
And we, our attendance committee just talked about that. It's like, what can we do in the wintertime now, now that like most of our other stuff that we're planning is more in the spring? And so, we just had a meeting about it to talk about what are some other things that we can do to try to incentivize? Is it some more of those tier-one motivators? Is it looking at additional gains and things like that? So, there have been conversations about it, because we do know that it's going to continue to be a struggle. And part of when we planned for it, we didn't want to bite off more than we could chew and plan something and not follow through with it. So, we thought it was really important to be very thoughtful when we planned it. But now, having seen some of the impact, we know that we may need to try to find something here in the winter. So, that's a really good point, because, yeah, we're well aware. And we don't want to see it completely drop off when we've made such progress here in the beginning.
No, well, thank you so much for the update. That's, it's all really great news, and I know that it is definitely a team and community effort. So, it's amazing to see, you know, like that growth. Like, you were just hoping for 1%, but across the board, that's amazing. So, yeah, thank you.
And the other part I didn't mention, and I didn't put in here, but was really nice to see as well, is we are seeing a significant increase in parents excusing and reporting absences, where before, we didn't even have anyone call in, which then the concern is like, you know, where is the student? Like, you know, we just start to wonder. And so, we know that our parents are getting the message, and they're excusing them when they're sick, as opposed to maybe not. And then our parents knowing that it is important for us to know that it is an excused absence. So, that's another part. And I'll add some of that data into Friday Notes, just because it's a lot to put in a presentation. But again, if you're interested in digging in a little bit more of the data, you have a little bit more access. Sorry, Kim, I had to...
No, you're totally fine.
Let's move to any updates from our board members?
If you don't know, I'm on the Board of EdRed. I took Carla's spot when she retired from the Board. We had our first meeting of the year just a few weeks ago, and one of the things that was discussed at the meeting were the three, every year, EdRed focuses on three legislative initiatives. I don't have all three of them in front of me, but I did bring up the fact, and we weren't the only district representative on EdRed who had ICE officers on campuses. So, I did bring that up. And one of EdRed's initiatives this year is to introduce legislation that would extend and clarify law enforcement. I'm not just going to read this. These are Bridget Peaches' words. She's the director of EdRed. "Extend current procedures for law enforcement interactions to include off-campus school activities. At present, these procedures apply, this is legally, only apply to students on school grounds." So, they're specifically looking to ensure that these protections cover students traveling to and from school. That means walking or on the school bus, because we've seen ICE activity targeted towards students on their way to school, and also bus drivers who have reached out to districts asking what they should do if buses are approached. They also want to create viability protections for school staff who adhere to these procedures. And also, because I brought this up, and also a couple other district superintendents, to clarify the parking lot issue, some districts, like District 207, have reported ICE presence in school parking lots on weekends. And, you know, a lot of us were, really kind of felt like we should have some sort of control, because this is sort of uncharted territory. We haven't had federal agents come and direct school parking lots for things like this. That we should have some sort of a power, or power in terms of, you know, what our rights are. And then the only other thing is I attended the EdRed kickoff luncheon on the 20th of October, and there was a panel discussion, and one of the people on the panel was Dr. Stephen Ozzie, who was the interim principal with Mike Pressler at Maine South. And it was a great discussion. There were several senators and representatives, so there was a lot of good discussion, a really good event to attend. And it is open to other board members, so next year, I will extend the invitation to anyone who wants to attend.
Thank you, Ed. Any other board member updates? I just have a quick couple. So, we also had the North Cook Dinner with, you know, all of our partner districts. So, that was a really great night. I know a couple of us got to go. The speaker, which now I'm blanking on his name, was a keynote.
Bolton?
Yes, yes, yes. So, he was really amazing, you know, and I think really just kind of spoke to kind of, you know, coming back to square one and belonging and building community. So, that was a really great event. I felt very energized after that. Speaking of North Cook, so a separate North Cook, I know, as Katie mentioned, lots of our students working with our ALOT coordinators at East and West. I am on the Board for North Cook, ISC, and they recently got recognized for Best Places to Work, which is super exciting. So, they definitely, you know, similar to us, definitely valuing like that community and support of one another, which, you know, I definitely see in our districts. So, just, you know, good to be collaborating, good to be in partnership as well with them. Any public comments?
I don't get any cards.
With no public comments, we will go ahead and move to Mary on the monthly status.
In your board packet is September financial statement. If you look from the revenue side, you're not going to see any movement in revenue until we get our property taxes, which we have no idea when we're going to get in our first collection. It, I think the biggest impact for us will be, I need to look at, we have our bond payments due in December, and we will net up the tax funds and the bond and interest funds. So, we may be needing to do an inter-fund transfer to help cover those payments, but we'll, we're keeping a close eye on that. It is disturbing to me that it's November 1st, and they have no idea when those tax bills will come out, which tells me that it's not likely to be before the end of the calendar year, which I think will put them at the latest they've ever been issued since I've been around, which is 30 years. So, that is, that's quite troubling. I don't, I wish we had better news, but, you know, one of the reasons that we have the fund-out policy we have is because unfortunately, in Cook County, things like this happen, and we need the cash flow to get us through whenever that tax statement comes. On the expenditure side, expenditures are in line with budget, and are in line with when you take a look at prior years. The exceptions, of course, are those funds in which they are capital project dependent. And as you know, capital projects span to fiscal year. All of our capital projects are within budget, but it just depends how much work gets accomplished in June versus July and August. So, I will entertain any questions that anybody has on the September financial statements.
Any questions? There's none. Thank you so much, Mary. There is no report for instructional services. We will move to monthly update and FOIA.
Since last month, we've received six requests, which have been either filled or in the process of them as required.
All right, we will now move to our consent agenda. Just as a note, all of our consent agenda items are on the printed agenda, so you can find on the table back there. So, I will ask for a motion on consent agenda item A through H, please.
Iker?
Hi.
Hartwig?
Hi.
Haiden?
Hi.
Patrice?
Horsterling?
Hi.
Hanigan?
Hi.
Yusuf Abrahamson?
Hi.
All right, and we will, can I get a motion on new course approvals? So, B, we have talked about these. These are for Syrian 3 and 4, Spanish Language Arts 1, Building Trades 2, and Broadcast Communication. So, thank you. And Sean?
Yes, if there's any further questions related to those, I'd be happy to answer. Otherwise, they will be offered to our students for next school year.
Questions? We'll go ahead and take the roll.
Haiden?
Hi.
Hartwig?
Hi.
Iker?
Hi.
Hanigan?
Hi.
Patrice?
Hi.
Horsterling?
Hi.
Yusuf Abrahamson?
Hi.
Can I get a motion on the approval of bid and awarding of contracts for the intergovernmental agreement for the Juniper Center?
And so, the Juniper Center had approached us about trying to partner to help support students who may need additional mental health support beyond the scope of what school-based services would be. This is of no cost to the district. It's much like our agreement that we have with Main State, and it would be to support students at Maine South and Maine East, since we already have Main State at Maine West. And so, they would like to be able to provide service, come to our building, and offer those services for students who would require additional support. We've worked with them to arrange a workflow of referrals, and families are able to either use, if they have insurance, insurance, or they also will do it free of charge if they do not have insurance and are able to do that. So, we thought it would be a great way to support our students.
So we thought it would be a great way to support our students, especially those who may not have access to mental health care and or be able to get to mental health care. So having additional supports within the buildings is a value add, we feel like. And so we just want to see if we can get that approved to have that, you know, again, no cost to the district, it's just allowing them to come on site. Any questions?
Is there a reason we aren't using Main Stay with South and East?
And at this point, it's mainly just capacity. And so we do have somebody who's been servicing at Main West, and so they don't always have someone for every building and or be able to go to each building. So one of our previous board members had kind of put Juniper Center in touch with us, and we've been working on it since, and have been able to come to some agreements and trying to find a way to support students.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, none, I take the vote.
Patrice?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Hyman?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramsen?
Aye.
All right, can I get a motion on the 2025 tax levy? Second, thank you.
So each year, we approve the levy intended form in order to comply with the truth in taxation in which we publish it in the paper in hold public hearing. Twenty twenty-five is a reassessment year, and I think the best visual I use to describe property taxes in school districts is, like, you have to consider property taxes if they were a pie. The tax caps allows that pie to grow by CPI. So CPI for the 2025 levy is two-point-nine percent. So our pie is only going to get bigger by two-point-nine percent. Every individual property is like a slice in that pie. How big or how small your slice is is going to depend on your assessment, especially given 2025 is a reassessment year. So if everybody's slices of pie stayed the same because their assessments went up in uniformity, people would pay two-point-nine percent more in property taxes. But inevitably, some slices of pie will get larger or smaller based on their assessment. So people will pay an amount of taxes that varies from that two-point-nine percent. We do ask for an amount above that two-point-nine percent to cover new property. New property is new construction. New property could be previously exempt property that now comes under the tax rolls. If that new property doesn't materialize, we don't get the taxes. So it's not like asking for a three-point-eight-five percent increase is going to get us more than that two-point-nine unless we have new property. This tax levy then will go for adoption by the Board in its final form in December and get filed with the county clerk by the last Tuesday in December.
Any questions?
When we say new growth, are we saying properties we think are going to be built?
Yes, so if you look, we do a historical average of what we think. We think that we'll get about forty million dollars. Last year, we were under that kind of significantly with about twenty-one million, which was the first time in a long time that it was that small. So it's possible that we'll only see twenty million dollars worth of new growth. We levy for about seventy million in case we're surprised. Because it's easy to look around and see what new developments are being built, but we don't get notification of when a previously exempt property is coming under the tax rolls. So that happens, let's say, with a medical facility that changes hands and is no longer exempt. If a municipality was to sell property and have that developed, that would be another reason. Or if a lot of churches, if a church is, loses its exemption status. So there are associations. Park Ridge has a lot of associations, like dental associations and manufacturing associations that are, that are property tax exempt. So those will all qualify as new property that we necessarily wouldn't recognize as something being built.
And as far as those pieces of pie that get, go up and down every year, is there rhyme or reason to that, something that we can expect?
The assessor prides himself, I'm getting the assessments accurate. I think they are just closing the books on the assessments for Main Township, I believe, last Friday. So we will start to probably in the next month and get what the assessments look like to kind of put together that rhyme or reason. Last, last triennial reassessment, homeowners saw a larger assessment increase than commercial and industrial. That's just kind of how the assessor's office determined that. So if you were the assessor's office, you would say, there is absolutely a rhyme or reason. That rhyme or reason is based on their formulary algorithms that they publish widely on their website. From our perspective, it's a little bit harder for us to understand how certain things we saw at the last assessment. We saw properties where we had an appraisal for the property through the Property Tax Appeals Board process that was significantly different than the assessor's office, generally on the lower side. So it was kind of difficult for us to kind of support those assessment increases because our evidence suggested that that assessment should have been at a different level. So I, I think that we will see some stuff like that, unfortunately. But this happens, a reassessment happens every three years. Once we get that data, what I did last year, kind of last three years ago, was kind of an in-depth analysis of like, okay, what is it, what are we seeing? What does it mean? Last time we had a triennial reassessment, Main Township had the highest percentage increase in assessments in the entire area, which was another huge surprise. So more information on their methodology will come out as we learn it, and I'll kind of do an analysis and share it with the Board. I kind of like, what does it, what does it mean for us? And what do we see in these numbers? We'll also then be able to go in and we track like our largest 2025 properties to see what happened with their assessments.
Thank you.
All right, and then just to clarify, so then our, the vote that we're taking right now is just that we are following the truth in taxation requirements, and we're moving to the record.
Which require you to adopt a levy in a tentative form.
Okay, yep, thank you so much. Can I take the vote?
Hyman?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramsen?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to move into closed session for discussion of student personnel, review of closed session minutes, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiating matters, and other permitted topics under the Open Meetings Act?
Over.
All right, thank you.